Well, good morning. Good morning, Jim. Long time no see.
Good morning.
This is State Board of Education meeting. The time is now 9:42 a.m. And a quorum of the board is present. So is Rochelle.
As usual.
The State Board of Education meeting of December 7, 2010 is called to order. December 7th, Pearl Harbor Day, my wife's birthday. We're all this. And first item is approval of agenda and order of priority.
Support.
Of finance, supported Liz. Any changes? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Introduction, the board members and others. Eileen, please.
Good morning. At the head of the table and chairman of the State Board of Education is Mr. Mike Flanagan, Superintendent of Public Instruction. Next to Mr. Flanagan is Mrs. Kathleen Strauss from Detroit, President of the Board. Next to Mrs. Strauss is Mr. John Austin from Ann Arbor, Vice President. Next is Mrs. Carolyn Curtin from Everett, Secretary of the Board. Next is Mrs. Mary Ann Yarid McGuire from Detroit, Treasurer of the Board. Next is Michael Zieg. Michael represents Governor Granholm at the board table. And next to Michael is Matenga Raggett. Matenga is the 2010-11 Michigan Teacher of the Year, and when she's in the classroom, she teaches Global Studies at Grand Ledge High School. Moving across the table, Ms. Cassandra Albridge, member from Rochester Hills. Next is Mr. Dan Varner from Detroit. And next is Mrs. Elizabeth Bauer from Birmingham. And then our last board member at the table is Mrs. Nancy Danhoff from East Lansing. And Mrs. Danhoff represents the board as its delegate to the National Association of State Boards of Education. Department of Education staff, Sally Vaughn, Chief Academic Officer and Deputy Superintendent; Carol Wolenberg, Deputy Superintendent; Mary Alice Galloway, interim Deputy Superintendent and State School Reform Officer; Martin Ackley, Director of Communications; Lisa Hanskinek, Director of Legislative Affairs; Lindy Bush, Director of Early Childhood Education and Family Services; Patty Canty, Director of Pre- and Technical Education Services; Rick Floria, Director of Financial Management; Lauren Jenkins, Director of Professional Preparation; and Joseph Martino, Director of Educational Assessment and Accountability. These are regular attendees with us today. Beverly Mathoulis and David Barth are here representing the Network of Michigan Educators; Bruce Fay, Wayne Risa; David Michelson, Michigan Education Association; Casey Kefkin, Michigan Middle Cities Education Association; Terrence Lunger, Superintendent Calhoun Intermediate School District; Pat McNeil, Michigan Association for Curriculum and Staff Development; Debbie Squires, Michigan Elementary and Middle School Principals; Billy Wimmer, Michigan Council of Charter School Authorizers; Peter Spatafor, Michigan Association of School Boards; Sandra York, Michigan Congress of Parents, Teachers, and Students. And I saw Jim Sandy walk in. I'm not sure who he's representing or if he's representing himself today, but some of your face at the board meeting.
Thank you, Eileen. Today's a special day for us. We have some friends and people who've just devoted themselves to the kids of Michigan who this will be their last board meeting. It's board members as well as some of the key staff that we've had. And I wanted to, at least for some of them, start out by saying, "Eileen, I can't thank you enough for your contributions," to say the least.
(applause)
And this is kind of a bittersweet meeting because you can see from the people that I just interacted with, these are -- you know, as state superintendent, I've worked with a lot of board members. I've been a superintendent for over 20 years in different capacities. And it's rare that you get a team that just is totally devoted to the children of the state. And I'm very honored and feel lucky to have that relationship. So this is just the start of that today. And so we say goodbye to a few people. This is the last board meeting for Elizabeth Bauer and Carolyn Curtin, who've served on the board for eight years. Last month was Reggie Turner's last meeting, and he's going to join us a little later today. A reception honoring Liz, Carolyn, and Reggie will be held following today's meeting. And speaking on behalf of the educators and students of Michigan, we just are so grateful for your service and the service that you provided to citizens of Michigan. They each bring kind of a specialness, to say the least, that you could see in their personalities and their goodwill and their expertise. And we'll be very missed. And, you know, as a superintendent, the other thing I have -- feel so lucky about is, you know, I was a little worried when I came here five years ago that did people running as Republicans and Democrats mean that we couldn't work in a bipartisan way? And I just can't tell you how impressed I am that we're the body that shows how to work in a bipartisan way. And I'm so proud of that and the way that you've been able to make that happen on behalf of kids here in Michigan. So the leadership's going to be missed here. And we have some resolutions. I think Mrs. Strauss is going to proceed from here where we're going to formally do some resolutions now, even though our real kind of celebration will be at the end of the day.
Well, thank you, Mike. You've taken the words out of my house, so to speak. I feel the same way. I feel that we've had a -- I was going to put this in my president's report, but I'll do it now. That we've had a wonderful -- the last four years especially, eight years, have been really unique, I think, in the spirit that we've had of collegiality, of cooperativeness, if there is such a word. We've worked hard to make it work. And I think we've done some really good things over the last number of years. And we will miss the contributions of these board members tremendously because Carolyn has such a calming effect on everybody. And she's so committed to public education, and that's all she's -- that's what she's concerned about, the students and public education. And that she makes it work because of that. So easy to work with. It's so pleasant, rewarding to work with. It's been a pleasure, Carolyn, really.
I'm going to be embarrassed here.
And Liz brings so much experience and so much knowledge and so much vision. I mean, she makes you think clear -- much more -- makes me, anyway, I don't know, I shouldn't say you, think much more clearly and directly and focused. It's just been wonderful. And we're going to miss you tremendously. And as I said to you yesterday, I think it's a real loss for the state of Michigan that you're not going to be back.
There's always public comment. You'll see me.
And I, too, am very proud of the fact that we've had a majority, six, two Democrats, but we've always worked in a very bipartisan manner and worked to make sure that everyone was on the major issues that we agreed. And when we didn't agree, it wasn't on a partisan basis. I don't think it ever was on a partisan basis. Every vote, if there was a disagreement, a five-three vote or something, three people on, including a Democrat and a Republican, and a Democrat and a Republican on the other side. It was just very amazing and very impressive. And what I tell this to people out in the community, they, "Really?" I find it hard to believe, but it's true. And it's been very, very rewarding. So we have a number of resolutions that we have on the agenda. The first one, doing it alphabetically, the first one is in honor of Elizabeth Bauer. And I move -- I will entertain him. Do you want me to share this?
Sure. Why don't you do this part if you'd like. All right? No, I --
You can share it, and I'll move.
You'll speak. So they move adoption of the resolution honoring Elizabeth Bauer. Moved by John and supported by Kat.
Is there any discussion?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. See a nonpartisan bipartisan vote.
You know, the Detroit City Council, I always say when they adopted resolutions and they presented, they say, "This was adopted unanimously." It's the only thing that's ever been adopted unanimously by the City Council of Detroit or something. But, okay. Liz, we'd like to offer you an opportunity to make some comments.
Is this the appropriate time for you?
Yeah, this is the appropriate time.
Well, then, I actually am leaving you. I told you at the last meeting that I had a charge for you all and that I was going to monitor your performance. So it's written so that you don't forget what I said. And so, let's see, John, Carolyn, well, pass them around because they have your name on because they have notes inside. So I think, I think, well, anyway, just pass them around. You know, Lewis and Clark made a journey into the unknown some hundreds of years ago. They wrote a book, has been written about it, called Undaunted Courage. And they took advantage of the knowledge and skill of a young woman, Sacagawea. But what they really did was go forward and persevered with all kinds of -- thank you so much. See, he has courage and perseverance, too. So that's what makes my computer work. Any case, I -- when I came on the board, I came to bring the voices of students and teachers and families to the policy table because my experience had been they weren't always heard. And I encouraged people to come and make public comment, and they did. And outcomes of that participation from 2003 on to now are things like the Universal Education Vision and Principles, the Foundation and Framework for Policy Development, and many other good accomplishments of this board. I mentioned a couple in here, but, I mean, the numbers are huge. But things like, we heard repeatedly from American Indians about their feelings about having their names used as mascots and things like that. We have a policy direction on that. We've maintained the arts and performing and applied arts in the Michigan merit curriculum. I think the stack of letter from the arts communities is probably about this high. So the public spoke, and this board responded. And I think going forward, it's really important to keep -- listen to the public and find some ways to do it. So I gave you a charge, the things that aren't finished in my plan. I had a plan, I always have a plan. People make fun of me about my plan. But the unfinished business in my plan is articulated here, and we won't read it because you can all read. But I really want to stress one thing, and that is please to listen to students. Please go out and talk to them. Talk to the elementary school kids. They think in a way very different from elementary school kids of even 10 years ago. And if we don't design our educational programs and use a -- we call it technology, they don't even have a name for it because it's -- Matenga knows this. And I'm so happy you're here to continue on. But if we don't make public education relevant to the youngest kids coming into it, they will find another way. They will walk. They can do it at home. They can get online. They can go to the University of Phoenix when they're eight years old or whatever. We must be relevant. And so I am urging you to have courage and to persevere and to talk to the kids about what they -- how they think and need and want, and then make it happen for them. Because we have to have an educated populace. We cannot have people just dropping out because it doesn't -- it's not meaningful to them. So -- and that's why I, you see, I'm stressing things like alternative ed, career and technical education, dual enrollment, and articulated programs. Let's design to meet the customers' needs and not package what we used to package just because it's convenient. So that's my message to everybody. Go forth and do. I will be watching. I can watch you on the web. I can call in. I can email. I can tweet you. And I'll tell you what's what. So you'll do a great job. I know you will do a great job because you're all committed to public education and to the people of Michigan. But that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause)
Can I just say, Liz, because Kathy and Mary Ann and I, I guess, were on the board prior to your arrival and will remain afterwards. And your presence on the board, I think we're all going to have some John Boehner moments here today where we --
(laughing)
You have been such a strong advocate for what we need to do. And you have lived the service of the board more actively than any of us, always being out there, listening, learning, pushing. And we've made headway on some of the things that are on your list because you were here making sure we made headway on some of the things that are on our list. And you're going to be missed, and we're not going to let you get away.
Well, I don't think I'm going very far.
And you're -- I'd say, without Liz, universal education and living up to our ideals of what education needs to be about would not have happened. And so you've made a fantastic contribution to this state. And I know you're going to continue, and we're going to tap you and involve you as much as you're willing. And I know your energy for this is unlimited. So thank you so much for your service in a way that is a model for the rest of us. We can't live up to what you have set as an example.
Well, just thank you so much. I mean, that's all. These little coins are just for you to put under your pillow, remind yourself every day to be brave.
Does this chair someone increase their weight?
No.
It's a retouch.
Well, then, I'm not putting it under my pillow. Aggressive.
Under your mack. Thank you all. Thank you. There really are no words to express what a privilege it's been to work with everyone, everyone in this room and all of those people watching on their televisions and the people that aren't watching on their televisions but are out there in front of their classrooms doing the thing today. It's a very important work that people engage in.
Would anyone else like to make comments at this time? Say something to Liz.
Talk about Carolyn.
I'm just going to -- yeah, I'm going to wait and save it till later.
Let's celebrate.
I would like to say one thing. I've always admired and respected Liz so much because she brings all the advocacy knowledge that we needed as a board. And I really feel like your leaving is a real loss for all the kids and families that have special needs and situations where they need a strong advocate on the board. And you were that person.
Yeah, I'll still be doing it.
I know you will. If you're on in this, I'll do it.
Just change my hat. Just thank you. I am going to miss you, though. I am going to miss you.
Well, did anybody else want to say anything? Not, I'm going to present the resolution to you, Liz.
Maybe we can get a picture up here, Liz, if you would. Come up here with Kathy.
I'll actually present this.
See, I'm not much of a board. I like a doing. Thank you.
Well, this is the one. I think you had a chance to read.
Yes, I actually read my board packet. And you all did a wonderful --
Turn it around, though.
Yeah, it's a real honor to present this. You raised our awareness. I mean, we were aware of things, but you made us raise our consciousness level to a new, to a new high.
Just trying to take you through that gorge, you know, around the band over Columbia. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Come on, Mike.
Oh, can I?
Yeah. Do I have it right, Scott?
Yes.
I've known to have it up right.
Okay. Now, the chair will entertain a motion for our next resolution, which is for Carolyn Curtin.
So move.
Moved by Mary Ann. Supported by Cassandra. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Madam President.
Well, I think I've said it already, Carolyn. You just bring such a wonderful attitude and cooperative spirit and a positive, positive attitude that we can do these things, that we're going to make things better, and we're concerned about the kids and the students. The both of you, it hasn't been for your own glory or your own advancement or your own anything. And it's really unusual in today's political world, I think. So we're very grateful for your service and very grateful that we've gotten to know you. And we have become friends, as we have. That's a real plus, that we can, you know, when people leave, that we still want to see you and hear from you.
Even if it's from Florida.
So, do you want to say something, Carolyn?
I had a few thoughts. Liz has very eloquently talked about so many of the things that we did. When I was first elected in 2002, the eight-year term looked like it stretched quite a long ways out there. But now we're at the end of this journey. And when I think about my time here, it's like a kaleidoscope of colors, all the issues and things that go. We've accomplished a lot in the past eight years, and I'll only recap three. That we worked diligently to bring no child left behind and adequately progress together so it would work. We worked hard on the grade level content expectation and increasing and strengthening our graduation requirements. We crafted the board's plan of restructure, reform, and revenues to better support public education. And we did this by listening to experts on both sides of the aisle. We kept discussing the areas that we had strong feelings about and weren't in agreement until we finally did come to agreement. And it truly was a bipartisan project, one that we hope, or I hope, that the legislators will emulate this coming year. We passed many resolutions dealing with a multitude of items. Liz mentioned some with the American, Native American Indians. Bullying came to mind to me very predominantly. And nutrition, we know kids have to be fed well or they can't learn. I'm extremely grateful to all of you in this room for your dedication to the students in Michigan. Superintendent Flanagan, thank you for your steady and thoughtful leadership. You have challenged us to think outside of the box and to reimagine education. Limitations live only in our minds. But if we used our imagination, our possibilities become limitless. And it's been a pleasure to work with all of the teachers of the year.
Absolutely.
They have, I have learned so much from them, and I think their voice adds so much to the discussion at the board table. Education is the ability to meet life situations. Sometimes the questions are more important than the answers. So I challenge my colleagues here to keep asking the questions. If my family were here, which they will be later in the day, I wanted just to thank them and my husband, Joe, for being very patient with my schedule. And I have told my husband that when I die, I want him to have etched on my tombstone. She tried to make a difference. So the time that I've spent with all of you has been very special to me, and I thank you.
Carolyn, can I just say, having served with you two, your leadership, and very
different from Liz and others of us, you have made a terrific difference. As Kathy, I think, suggested, there's never any question where you were coming from. There was no agenda, no motivation, other than, is this a good thing for improving education? I mean, that's so viscerally who you are that it has been a huge contribution. I remember so many discussions and debates where, you know, you're more soft-spoken than many of us, but as others of us are mouthing off and talking a lot, at the end, you often weighed in and said very simply and succinctly, "This is, here's what we should do. Here's what I think we should do." And that carried tremendous weight and helped us find the right decisions because it came from the place that you brought it. Is this the right thing to do for education? And you've made a tremendous contribution to the state, so thank you very much.
Thank you for those kind words. I'd like to say, too, that, Carolyn, I think one of the things that I found to be the most, oh, how shall I say this? The thing I admired the most about you is that, much as John has said, that you just went about things day by day to get things done. You didn't make a big fanfare about it or often raise a claim to anyone else's notice. You just set about every day getting things done. And I think that that's something we all need to take heed of and that we all do in education, is it isn't so much about the woo-ha of the day, it's about the fact that we face the day, we face the problems of the day, and we worked on them to get them done. So thank you for that mentoring for all of us.
Thank you very much.
Liz, please.
I just wanted to say, I had the privilege of campaigning with Carolyn in 2002. And we actually got to know each other quite well on the campaign trail. In fact, I have to keep George Bauer on a leash because he thinks she's pretty wonderful, too. (laughter) We have an admiration society that's out there that it's benign, you know, but it really is. My husband's the best reader of people that I know in the whole universe, in the whole universe. And when he says somebody's A-, K-, A-plus, ultra, then they are, and you are. And that is really -- but I also especially wanted to thank you for two more things. One, your focus on early childhood education. You've kept that on the plate forefront all through these eight years, and it's very, very important. And I know Lindy appreciates that. And all of us who know kids need a really great start appreciate your focus on that. And then the other thing is, you know, we talk about the bipartisan stuff, but Carolyn and I have done some, we went to Ludington to speak to AAUW and prove that a Democrat and a Republican could talk about public education going toward the same star and all sorts. We've done that a bunch of times and started in the campaign, and it's gone for eight years, and I hope it'll continue. I'll just have to go to Everett.
You're all excited.
Thank you. Thank you big time.
Cassandra, please.
I just want to say a couple words. I just, you know, to both of you, I hope you know what a tremendous example you have been. And whether you know it or not, you are a mentor for other women. And sometimes, you know, you can mentor women without even knowing that you're doing it. And I think that speaks volumes for both of you because you have really, you paved the way for others and, you know, you've shown them how to do it. And so I'm going to miss you both. You know, I've been on this board four years, and we've had the same makeup, and it's going to be so different without both of you at this table. But you've really been a great example. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Well, I'd like to present the resolution to you, Carolyn.
Up here I am.
I assume you've read it.
Yes, I did.
Well, it's my honor to present you with the resolution on behalf of the board. I can't thank you enough. You just, everybody can say, we just love you. I think that's the answer. We just love you.
Very much.
Congratulations.
Mike, get in here.
Thank you very, very much.
There's that picture.
Yeah.
One more.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Well, Reggie will be at the reception this afternoon, but I think it's in order that I'll entertain a motion for the resolution now, as we can present him later today.
I move that we adopt a resolution honoring Reginald Turner.
Support.
Moved by Nancy, supported by Liz. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you. Save that for Wendy Seer, so he can hear this.
Right.
Great. And even though we're going to do this a little bit later, and I know, you know, all of our folks who work at the department are just, I can't thank them enough, but we certainly have a special person here that we'll honor later today also, and Eileen Hamilton. And I just want to, given that this is her last board meeting, also say, in addition to what we're going to do at the end of the meeting with the resolutions, I think, I'm going to at least stand and applaud her. Resolutions for all of our employees will be later today. As many of you know, this is a long list this time because of the state incentive program.
Sad.
It's sad.
It's very sad.
And I'm going to have more to say about some of those folks later today, and we all will.
Yes. I can't imagine this board table without Eileen here. Ever since I've been on the board, if that's a long time.
She can.
Eileen started as an intern at 12-years-old.
Yeah.
Early retiree, to say the least, but grandma is going to spend more time, I think, is what puts you over the top on that retirement decision. We have lots of stories like that for our resolutions later today, and I miss each and every one of our folks. Well, okay, we're moving to the committee of the whole meeting. And the first item on today's committee of the whole agenda is a presentation on new Michigan Education Assessment Program, or fondly known as the MEEP Writing Assessment. This presentation's going to provide an update on the status of the new MEEP Writing Assessment and describe the process that will be used to set standards this winter. The next steps are going to be to continue development of assessment and develop recommended performance, so-called cut scores for approval by the board in early 2011. So joining me at the table, joining us at the table are Sally, Joseph, and Steve, who have just, you know, I feel like today will be one of those days we'll just keep saying positive things, but under a tremendous amount of workload, these folks just step up every day. And I think Wendy is also in the audience somewhere for possible questions that we might have. So Wendy, thank you for joining us also. Sally, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you. As you know, we made a decision, you made a decision to change the writing test, and so we are now back to, present to you with the OEA staff how that new writing test is actually going to make a significant improvement on the ones that we had done before, but providing a lot more significantly important information to teachers and parents. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Joseph and to Steve.
All right. Before I do this, I do want to recognize again Wendy, who has done most of the heavy lifting on the redesign of the MEEP Writing Test, and I think has done a fantastic job, as well as Vince Dean and Andy Mittelstedt, who are working as managers in our assessment program. And Steve Viggé has, as the manager of our psychometrics unit, not only been the manager of the psychometrics unit, but also the psychometrician for MEEP. Kind of a dual role. It's been a lot of work for him. So, we'll start out, you may recall that we made some changes. The state board did vote in favor of making some changes to the writing test. And just to go over some of those, we did move from grades three through eight to testing writing in only grades four and seven. We did that to add more points to improve reliability. We did have, so just kind of historical view, we had 15, 20, and 23 points on the writing test in 2006, 2007, and 2008 respectively. It didn't quite give us the reliability that we wanted, so we came back to the board and you gave us the permission to go ahead and field test the new assessment in 2009, and we took it operational this fall. And this fall, we have 50 points in each of grades four and seven, and we'll talk about some of the real improvements that we made as well. So we added, so first of all, we added some analytic rubrics. We'll talk a little bit about what that means. Instead of scoring something as a whole piece of writing and just doing that, we look at multiple facets and scoring the facets as a whole piece of, looking at the whole piece of writing for a facet of what we're looking for. And it gives, it really does give more and targeted feedback to schools and students. We think this is really exciting. We did standardize the question asked of students on the peer response to a student writing sample essay. We added informational writing to the assessment. We maintained narrative writing on the assessment, and we divided the new writing assessment over two days. There is actually a lot more student production that goes into this assessment. So if you look at the new assessment design, we have an essay in narrative style, asking students to tell a story. We have an essay in informational style. We have multiple choice response to a writing sample. We actually have two samples that they respond to. And we have an essay response to a student writing sample, asking them how could a student improve their writing. Gives us a total of 50 points, and of that, 34 points come from the essay. That's 68 percent of the total that come from actual student production of writing, which we think is pretty exciting. I think we're one of the only states that actually is able to do this. The standardized question for the essay response to student writing sample is now, what could the writer do to improve the sample? That's maintained from year to year. Teachers know exactly what the question is going to be. They don't know what the sample will be, but they know exactly what the question will be. How do you improve this sample? So it does improve consistency from year to year, and this is responsive to grade level content expectations regarding understanding of the writing process, sequence, flow, style, clarity, coherence, consistency, proofing, editing. So all of these things go into the student's response here. We do have a holistic rubric for this one, so it looks at the writing as a whole piece. It is scored on a four-point rubric, and it's scored on whether the student adequately and in an integrated manner gave recommendations for improving the writing sample using relevant details from the sample to support the recommendation and gave an explanation of why their recommendation improves the sample. That's actually a pretty significant amount to ask of students, and we are seeing in the scoring that we are seeing a full range. We have a lot of students who are scoring at the top end of that, which was actually one of the issues that we were seeing before. We didn't see a lot of people scoring at the very top end. So, students are able to respond well to this particular writing sample, or writing task. For our essay response to a narrative writing task, I've got an example prompt that we had up here. And in the example prompt, it says, write about change. Your life changes as you get older. For example, you can now do things you could not do before. Think about things that have changed in your life, write about change. And then ask them to do only one of the following. Write a story about a time when you had to make a change, or write a story about someone you know that had to make a change, or write a story in your own way about change. And then it also includes a checklist for them, so that they know whether or not they've included a lot of the elements of high-quality writing. This one is responsive to the creation of a narrative, grade level content expectations about the creation of a narrative, use of ideas that are consistent with story, organization consistent with story, personal style, grammar and usage, and spelling. And this is the kind of information that individual students and teachers get back about how their students did. There is a zero-to-three rubric on four pieces. Prior to this, for the story, for the narrative rubric, they just got back a zero-to-six. All they got back was a zero-to-six. Now they're getting back a zero-to-three on four pieces here, which is the ideas that they use, the organization, is the organization consistent with the type of organization you see in a narrative text, and then looking at style and conventions. Do they effectively use language to convey their purpose, and so on? I'm not going to go through everything here because that's an awful lot. Example prompts in grades four and seven to an informational task in grade four, the prompt this year was, and we're releasing the prompt, so I can tell you exactly what the prompt was. Animals are interesting. Think about two animals. What do they look like? Where do they live? What do they eat? What else do you know about them compared to animals? And grade seven, what effect does watching television have on study habits? The prompts include checklists for high-quality writing for the writers to check their writing against as well. And again, we can say that this is really consistent, responsive to grade level content expectations in writing. Again, personal style, grammar, and usage in spelling. That is really the same grade level content expectations as for the narrative, but we have specific content expectations for creation of an informational text, use of ideas consistent with an informational text, and organization consistent with informational text. And so you see again, here's our analytic rubric. You get a lot more information back about how students did. You actually get a profile of how students did. Did they do well with ideas? Did they do well with organization, style, conventions, and so on? And so, we created some new MEEP writing reports, and if you would like to see mockups of those reports, we have them available. We didn't think it would, you know, necessarily provide them here in advance, but if you want them, let us know and we can get them to you. It shows exactly what the students and teachers get back. So the goal for the new reports was to represent best practices in writing instruction and assessment. Best practices in writing instruction and assessment don't reflect just getting a single overall score about writing proficiency. It really talks about profiles, how well did they do in narrative, how well did they do in informational. So we're providing rich feedback regarding student writing skills in order to aid teachers in designing effective instruction for individual students, assessing curriculum needs, and helping parents and guardians understand the writing progress of students, not just on a single score, but kind of on a profile level. So, if you look at what we have here, this is a little hard to see on the screen, but if you look at the old MEEP writing reports versus the new MEEP writing reports, we have everything that we had on the old reports plus a lot more. That's kind of the basis of this slide. We have, and in particular, what we have here that is really important, is that there's a lot of information on those new reports about the profiles for analytic, for informational writing and narrative writing, and a lot more elements reported per student, plus a total of 50 points, which makes the scores a lot more stable. Okay, so what's the current status and the next steps? Students have taken the MEEP Writing Assessment. Assessments have been returned to the contractor, measurement, for processing. Processing, scoring, and data file creation is nearly complete. It is almost completely done, and we do anticipate that things will be complete very soon. And one of the things that we also, harking back to when we came to the board with this proposal to change, we did indicate that we were having trouble seeing students scoring at the very high end of those ranges. When you look at all of these things, every single one of these rubrics, the analytic rubrics, we are seeing a widespread of students in every one of those score categories. So we achieved the goal, which is, I think, exciting for us as well. All MEEP results minus writing will be released in data files to schools as soon as the data file creation is completed and validated. They were released last year in mid-December. I'm going to go out on a limb and say that we are on track to release again in December this year, barring any major issues. We haven't seen any so far. And again, as I said last month at the board table, as soon as these are released, schools can use these results immediately. Just so far, just as long as it doesn't constitute a public release of the data. Standard setting will occur for the new writing assessment in January 2011. Steve and Adam Wise, a psychometrician in Steve's unit, will be leading a lot of that work. The results of the standard setting will be reviewed and validated by our Technical Advisory Committee of National Measurement Experts. The results of standard setting will be presented to the State Board of Education at the February 2011 meeting. That's the projection at this time. We don't see, foresee anything changing that. And pending state board action at the February meeting, all the reports of MEEP results will be finalized and released to schools and the public as soon as possible after that. The reason we have to wait until then to release the actual reports is because in all of our reports, all the subjects are integrated into the report. We can't just release something without writing. But we can release the data file as soon as it's available this next month. All right. So this is the standard setting plan that Steve and Adam have really been working on. We will be implementing what's called a modified body of work method to set standards, to identify the cut scores. And again, as you recall, we have four levels. We have to set three cut scores to divide those, the entire scale into four levels. So three cut scores will be set in a process that covers three days, with training day one, multiple rounds of standard setting on days two and three. Roughly 20 to 25 panelists are currently being recruited to serve in each of the grades four and seven. And the panelists will be representative of Michigan education stakeholders, will include teachers, administrators, parents, business leaders, other stakeholders. So before round one, one of the most important things we do in standard setting is the panelists actually take the test.
And they still volunteer to be panelists, huh?
Yep. And then panelists review the performance level descriptors. And performance level descriptors are descriptions of what students know in each of the four performance levels, should know and be able to do if they are in one of those performance levels. The panelists will become intimately familiar with those PLDs in, before round one, and all subsequent sorting of student work samples will be based on their match to those specific performance level descriptors. This is a really nice method of setting standards because the standard setting panelists actually get together and look at the full body of work that a student has produced and say, does this qualify as advanced, proficient, partially proficient, or not proficient? It's an exciting way of doing standard setting. The panelists will receive training on the standard setting process, and then panelists will review a large set of student work samples. So each of those work samples will include the responses to all the tasks. In other words, the students' bodies of work. The complete set of bodies of work will span the full range of scores observed on the assessment, so that there's no restriction of where they can place those cut scores. And the complete set of bodies of work will be strategically selected to have desirable statistical and qualitative features, really to represent what students have done throughout the state. Particular attention, again, will be given to student essays because on a writing test, actual student writing is pretty important, right? So panelists will examine the student work samples, their scores that students receive on the work samples, and their compatibility with the performance level descriptors, and they will, and they will sort them into four piles, and from that, you get recommended cut scores. Between round one and two, we will have statistical analysis run to identify the three group recommended cut scores that each panel, that was recommended from, in round one. Then we will provide feedback information that shows the cut score recommendations for each panelist and the overall group. So panelists will have an opportunity to discuss the feedback information prior to round two. In round two, panelists will again examine student work samples and the scores that students received, but in this round, the selected bodies of work will not cover the full range. They will focus pretty narrowly around those preliminary recommended cut scores. So we'll be tightening in and refining those cut scores that are recommended by the panel. And panelists will also be provided with information on the relationship of the scores on those new work samples to the work samples they rated in round one. So they'll really get feedback going back and forth between the rounds, and it is really to target, to fine-tune those three cut scores in round two. So between round two and round three, statistical analyses will again be run. Feedback information will again be provided to the panelists that show cut score recommendations for individuals and for the whole group. And then statistical analyses will also be run to provide impact data to the panelists. For example, the percentage of students in each of the four categories that would be at or above each of those three cut scores. Finally, they will have a round three. The panelists will receive that, that impact information and get to see that, how that impact information is related to the student work samples. And then we will engage in what's called vertical articulation. We want to make sure that grade four and seven cut scores are consistent with each other. That's a really important piece. So the grade four and seven panelists will meet together to make sure that that's appropriate. And they will also have information on high school writing cut scores to be incorporated to assure that there's some kind of coherence between grade 11 and grade seven, because we really need to have that kind of consistency as well. And the nice thing about grade 11 writing is the grade 11 writing cut score is already very similar to the difficulty of the ACT college readiness benchmark in English. So this should have some representation of approximately college-ready in English in high school, and then approximately on target to college readiness in grades four and seven. Exciting to be able to do that. Panelists, again, will be reminded that the cut score should be tied Panelists, again, will be reminded that the cut score should be tied directly to the PLDs, and panelists will make their final recommendations. And that's the end of the process. And we do look forward to bringing forward, for your approval, in February, these new recommended cut scores in writing.
Thank you.
A lot of work between now and then, yeah.
That's exactly what I was going to say. Kidding. You can see why, when we bring you this recommendation, honestly, my role is somewhat perfunctory because I have such confidence in the process that's used and the deliberations that go on. It does sound a little bit like March Madness brackets with round one and two. Not sure.
That's not all bad.
It's not all bad. Can I just, before we make comments, I just want to acknowledge that teacher, Ms. Natasha Hanks, and her staff are here, her students are here today, because I think many of them are interested in possibly teaching. Do I have that right as a profession? Would you acknowledge yourself, Ms.? And is that correct, you're here as possibly future teachers?
Yeah. Yep. These are high school juniors and seniors from Clinton County who are taking introductory courses through LCC and the Clinton County Green Club. So they're taking the ed right now, and we're just learning about the different levels of government and the roles that are played in the department.
Well, welcome. You would have been proud to hear Board Member Bauer mention a moment ago that what we really need are access to more students on a regular basis. So thanks for being here today, and hopefully we don't scare you out of the profession. It's one that's very rewarding, and I appreciate your taking the time to be here.
Let's red the charge.
Yes, Nancy.
First of all, I want to congratulate you. I think, as thrilled as I am, I think you probably succeeded, Joseph, very quickly in setting these young teachers head spinings, so that they are like falling asleep because it's like, "You've got to be kidding me. I've got to learn about all this stuff, and you must be kidding me." But in all seriousness, I'm thrilled at the way in which you have worked collaboratively with this. And when I say collaboratively, I don't mean just with the people you've worked with, but the method that you've come up with to score and the rubric you've used, to me, is it occurs to me that it will be so helpful to teachers. It's in plain English. It's something that people can understand on a daily basis, what does this mean for me today? And I think it's helpful for the students, too. Students and parents will be able to clearly understand this, as opposed to the very accurate data transmission we sometimes have that may not mean anything in a daily life to somebody. This, to me, I think is wonderful. I do have a couple of quick questions, because I think I'd disappoint you if I didn't. Could you give me just an example, under where you talk about essay response to student writing samples? The standardized question, what could the writer do to improve this sample? Could you help me understand just a little bit what you mean by that? Is this a sample that it talks about writing, or is this just somebody's writing that's a sample? Or what do you mean by that?
Well, I could give you a reasonable response, but it's not going to be anywhere near the best response that you could get. So I'm actually going to ask if Wendy could come up and assist with that question.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi. The multiple choice questions are based on two student writing samples. And these are actual students' writing pieces. And they contain errors, okay? And so the students are asked multiple choice questions about them that deal with revising and editing, but then they are also given this constructed response where they're asked to tell, you know, what could the writer do to improve the writing sample? It's part of the conferencing that should be embedded in classrooms in the writing process, where students are writing, they're talking about their writing, and they're telling, you know, the good points and what you can do to improve it. I think it's a very real-life skill.
Yeah.
That, you know, all of us, before I send an email, the last thing I do is I read over my email to see is there anything I need to fix. And so that's what we want to get teachers and students to do automatically. And so that's why we told them what the question was, you know, so that they will practice it in their classrooms. You know, what can I do to make this writing better? So it's based on the actual student writing samples.
I couldn't agree with you more. I just had a homework session with a group of young people that I work with yesterday, and we were looking at writing samples that they were ready to turn in today. And I was appalled. Not because they didn't have good ideas, and not because they hadn't been thoughtful, but because they had not gone through it. They had not decided whether or not their grammar, spelling, punctuation was correct. And they hadn't talked with each other at all, although they each had the same question. And so to me, this is really indicative of what's really happening in a classroom today, and what really needs to happen with our young people to get them to think about what they put out, and to have pride, too, in what they put out, that what they've been able to turn back is something that I have taken the time and value enough to have gone back and reviewed and looked at. So to me, this is a wonderful, real-life example, and I thank you so much for that. The other question I had was over here on the analytic rubric on the narrative, and I probably double that for the informational writing as well. When you talk about style and conventions, how would you define style and conventions?
All right. Style refers to sentence structure, okay? Also, variety in sentences, that they all don't start, you know, noun, verb, noun, verb. Word choice. We're looking for kids to, you know, use some interesting words, phrases, to show, you know, their personality, when you really think about it, their voices coming through. We didn't use the word "voice" because that can be interpreted in different ways, but style really refers to voice in writing. Conventions are more the spelling, grammar, punctuation, capitalization. And it all, the rubric's the same for both fourth and seventh grade, as far as expectations go. But we are looking at the pieces in the student writing from the perspective that this is a fourth grader. You know, what do you expect a fourth grader to do? What do you expect a seventh grader to do? I'm scoring papers right now for range finding, and when you see a seventh grader using a lowercase "i" for the personal pronoun, you know, it's like, you know, by seventh grade, they should be capitalizing "I." So that's what we mean by the conventions. And it's pretty much the same for both narrative and informational text.
And by seventh grade, they should have a noun and a verb in each sentence, right? You lack complexity. The last question I have is, given this wonderful, very easy-to-understand and usable daily, it's daily usable in the classroom, I think, how will we be able to work with our university teacher preparation institutions to help bring this knowledge into young teachers as they learn about assessment and what they're looking for and how they're looking for it? Because I think this would be really critical for our teacher, our young-to-be teachers to have this experience before they ever get into a classroom. Will that opportunity avail itself?
Well, the rubrics are available on our website.
But will we reach out to them at all?
Mel Duke from Michigan State University was involved, and Gary Troika from Michigan State were involved with looking at our rubrics and giving us some input into them. And so at this point in time, and I know MSU has had some access to this, but I really don't know how to answer that question.
No, we have a listserv. We have a listserv for deans that we use with some proactive issues, and maybe this is one that we should do that also.
I just think if we're going to be effective for young teachers, young people who are wanting to become teachers, that too often, a lot of this is thrown at them once they're in the first year in the classroom. And this is such a wonderful example, when you give classes and learnings in assessment, that I think it would behoove us to make that available to them, not just, "I just want you to know, we've got this, deans, but this is really important for your young people to have within your curriculum."
See Sally nodding. We'll find a way to, this and items like that are good things to be proactive, and then with a little explanatory cover note.
You know, it happens, you know, when some of the things that you make a decision on, either with curriculum or assessment or writing, then it takes us some time to spin that back into the TPIs, because this in some ways should be driving how they're teaching teachers how to teach writing.
Well, exactly. That's where I'm coming from.
So we need to make sure that they're aligned. Yeah, got you.
And I'm wondering, just to the point of Nancy's question, I'm wondering if we should re-invite Flora. I think we used to have a regular rep from the Deans Council, and then they could be screening from their perspective. So maybe we need to re-invite, from me, Eileen, and more formal, and maybe from Kath and from me, that we appreciate regular representation, because sometimes they'll see something that we're not quite thinking about at that moment, and like a lot of our other guests come in for that reason. Mary Ann, you were next, I think, then Kath.
Thank you.
John.
Thank you very much. I know this represents a huge amount of work. I'm very happy to see that the topic sentence, or the sample topic sentence, anyway, is quite generic. I think in the past, we've tended to have topic sentences that depended on one's locale. And with what I'm seeing here, it's something that could apply to any child, anywhere. And I guess that's my concern. How can we be sure that in the future, that will continue on, that questions won't get to where children have a problem responding?
Steve, do you want to talk about the bias reviews we do?
Absolutely. Each item that we field test and use operationally undergoes substantial review from many stakeholders. And the big groups that kind of go into that are content review groups, as well as bias and sensitivity reviews. And they take all the items that were given in the previous assessment and review them, but a lot of times, because there's so many items, they need to be queued up a little bit. And those are queued up by using a process known as differential item functioning analysis. So we actually do statistics on them to see if there are some favored groups for those items, particularly ones who score higher than others. And a lot of times, those walk along gender lines, racial ethnicity lines, socioeconomic status. And we're fine-tuning that even more. I think that the past practice has been just to kind of go along with the federal subgroups, the reporting subgroups that are on there, but we've actually advanced that practice even more to kind of look at the interaction of some of those groups, and to bring in some English language learner subgroups and specific translation subgroups. So we do take a pretty comprehensive look at performance at subgroup levels, I guess, to kind of help us determine if any of that's going on. But ultimately, it is these stakeholders that have to look at them and help determine if that's reasonable, because, you know, quite frankly, sometimes there are statistical artifacts, where we see that an item is being favored by one group versus the other, but then a group of folks who would help address that can't really find why that's the case. But at the other, on the other end of that spectrum, we also don't set criteria that are so high that only a small, select group of items get in there. There's some that are called like medium-level diff or mid-level diff, and they may or may not have something going on, and a lot of times, it's those stakeholder groups that will interact with those items and really find that, well, this one doesn't show a large bias towards one group versus the other, but we have some problems with the wording in this item. And if the stakeholder groups have issues with those items, they don't appear in the next assessment until they're revised. So we do have a pretty comprehensive screening process that kind of goes on with that.
I'm good.
I think if you look at the workflow that we have, there are, we just finished this for the item bank that we're developing, but there are six different places that an item can be rejected and never see the light of day. But it is pretty significant.
Oh, that's great. I have one other question. This is my perennial question. How long will it take, or how long do you estimate that it'll take to get the results back to the classrooms?
We think that, as it currently stands, my understanding of where it currently stands is that the full reports should be available, I think, you know, almost immediately after the State Board approves the cut scores, because we will have done everything to that point. My guess is a couple of days after the approval. Because the scoring is almost completed, Steve's working on the psychometrics right now, that's nearly completed. I think-
No, I'm talking about once the students take the, how long, the results back.
Going from here forward, we are looking at probably, we don't think that this is going to delay reporting, so we continue to be optimistic that even with the new writing assessment, we will be able to get results back in December. Mid-December represents about six weeks from the close of the testing window, which is, for a paper and pencil-based test, pretty good. And we do, we continue to be optimistic that we will be able to do that with the new writing assessment as well.
Okay, great. Would you, Joseph, in the spirit of Mary Ann's question, also just recap for those of us here, the whole issue related to what schools can do versus in terms of making it public? Because I think that's been, schools get scores back quickly, and we've been clearer now, and if you could describe what they can do with those scores as opposed to what we have to wait for statewide basis.
Right. So kind of to recap what I talked about last time, we used to wait until everything was perfect to release anything, reports, data files, everything. Well, now we release the data files first. As soon as we know that the data are accurate for individual students, we release the data files.
Which is about?
Mid-December. We did it last year in mid-December. We're anticipating mid-December this year. And then we end up having-
Release those to the schools.
Those, release the data files to the schools. The schools can use the data files for their planning purposes, for school improvement purposes, to communicate with students, to communicate with teachers. They can even share with the students and the parents the scores that they have if they so desire. What they can't do is do something that constitutes a public release, like look at aggregate scores at a public board meeting. Then we validate all of the reports as soon as we can, and we release those as soon as we can after having validated things. One of the things that does often delay that is, we might have, we've had in the past something go wrong with a contractor in producing the reports, and so that delayed reports. We've also had something go wrong with the MSDS submission, the Michigan Student Data System submission, where a flag was flipped, and we had to make sure that, you know, it was a large enough district that it was going to affect our demographic results as a whole state. Well, we had to fix that before we could finalize reports and so on. But those reports, last year, Vince, what time did the, when did the reports get out last year? Early February last year. And we're anticipating, again, early February this year, because that's when we're bringing the writing to the board.
So I think, I think what, to Mary Ann's question, last year, I think it was to try to say, how do we separate this so schools can use it as quickly as possible based on their results? And that's what's been made available now. That's a change in administrative policy here. And then what is the different issue related to statewide release and all of those comparisons? So, I mean, I think it gets at the meat of your concern and other board members' concerns, but still keeps the integrity of the statewide issue intact. Is that fair to say?
That's fair to say.
And then I think it was Kath, and then John, and Dan, and the team.
Well, thanks. I want to thank you, too. This is really, I think this is a real step forward. And I was hoping, and Sally more or less answered my question before I asked it, was will this, how will this encourage, or will it encourage, and I hope it does, more and better teaching of writing? I have been concerned since I've been on the board about the teaching of grammar and proper use of grammar. It just pains me when I hear newscasters and other people on television using incorrect grammar. I hear educated people, professionals, using incorrect grammar. And I was talking to a teacher of composition at one of the community colleges a couple of days ago, and she is just appalled at the fact that her students, she teaches freshmen at community college, in suburban community college, that, she said, "They don't know grammar. They don't know pronouns. They don't know punctuation." She's just astonished. And these are from good suburban school, these kids from good suburban school districts. And you wonder, what are they teaching in writing? So-
Well, they ain't going to make it, then.
They're not. They're not, but they do. I mean, people-
That was a joke.
Yeah.
That was a joke, sorry.
I get that. But I'm really worried about that, so I've been concerned about- So I've been concerned about this, and people kidded me, you know, when they kept bringing up grammar. But I think it's really important. And apparently, we have not done a very good job of it over the years, because people get it wrong all the time. I don't, they don't even know they got it wrong. I mean, that's, it's appalling. So this really is a step in the right direction, I think. If we had to, I appreciated Nancy's questions of what does, what do you mean by conventions? Is it possible to spell out what you mean by convention, instead of using the word convention? Could you say spelling, punctuation, and so on?
Or does it say it?
Does it say it? Did I miss that?
Well, I think, you know, a legitimate point. And, you know, within the context of the rubric, we do refer to grammar usage, spelling, capitalization, punctuation.
Okay. You did say that in the beginning.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's right.
Even the teachers might not understand what you're talking about.
I think teachers probably understand.
Right. So I'm glad to hear that this will, Sally said this will drive better teaching of writing skills. So that's a step in the right direction. And Mary Ann's question was very pertinent, too, I think, about the fact that the question has to be word, the statement that they're writing about has to be worded in such a way that it's neutral, so to speak. And that's a very important, I was glad to hear Steve's explanation of all the processes you go through to make sure that that happens, because that's really very critical, I think. We haven't, we haven't, we've been aware of it, but I don't think we've really done as much as we should have before to make sure that those questions were neutral. And I think that's a very important point. So I'm glad to see this, and I'm really impressed with it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Kath. John, and then Dan.
Thank you, too. Real quick, if we're requiring state writing assessments grades four, seven, and 11 now, is this alongside, what other reading or language arts assessments are we requiring when?
Three through eight in reading and 11 in reading.
Okay. And who, how is the writing test graded? A contractor does it, do they have people read it? Is it graded by computers or machinery, or how does that work?
It is, it is graded by teachers, by educators that are hired by our contractors. It's not Michigan educators necessarily, although there is a scoring center in Michigan that does participate. It is the contractor scoring centers around the country, including one in Ypsilanti, that does the scoring using educators who come in nights, weekends, whenever.
So a live person reads these?
Yes.
That's our preference.
That's reassuring.
Okay. Dan, please.
That was actually my question. I do have a point that I want to make as well, in addition to just thanking you for doing this. So the greater point, I guess, that I'm drawn to make is that with all of the reforms going on in the world of K-12 education, many of them driven to tie various systems of analysis back to student performance. So whether that's teacher pay and evaluation getting tied to student performance, or others, this really is a huge, I mean, so all of those, you've got issues to deal with in all of those areas, right? How do we effectively tie or evaluate teacher performance, so on? But, but basic to that is being able to effectively measure student performance. So huge issue. I'm really pleased to see, one, the state on the vanguard around trying to address some of the student performance measurement questions. I think that's fantastic. And so kudos to you, and to the staff, and to everybody for being, willing to take that The question really here, or the point maybe, is really around, so there's measuring content, right? And then there's measuring the ability to apply that content and communicate that content to others. And writing is one tool that's used to communicate that content to others, but there are others, right? I mean, so, so the question really is here, how far away are we from being able to measure student performance at a statewide level, including things like verbal communication skills, right? So presenting what I know, so on and so forth. Just, it's really more a point than a question, but if you actually have an answer to it, I'm curious.
Well, that really does get to the adoption of the Common Core. The adoption of the Common Core also indicates that English Language Arts includes speaking and listening. And part of the speaking content standards in the Common Core do talk about public speaking and presentation. There are a lot of the higher-order skills that, because of cost issues, we have not been able to necessarily get onto the assessments as much as we would like to do. And when we move to the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium assessments in 2014, because of the economies of scale, we will be able to include a lot of these higher-order thinking skills, higher-order presentation, speaking, those kind of things will be included on those assessments. As I can note, that we had to go from measuring writing in sixth grades to measuring writing in two grades to be able to afford to do this kind of assessment. With the economies of scale, with the 31-state consortium, we anticipate we will be able to do much more of this type of assessment in all of the areas, simply because of economies of scale. And we think that's exciting. But again, it is economies of scale that allow us to do that in all grades, instead of just four and seven, and just in writing.
And as I've mentioned before, Michigan's a leader in that consortium, and certainly Joseph is among that group. And then I think it was Matenga, then Carolyn, Cassandra.
Yeah. Just from a teacher's point of view, and excuse my voice, I'm not going through puberty again. It's just occupational affliction. I'm really excited, from a teacher's point of view, that we've got something to work with. And I wanted to commend a couple points, and just make one, and ask one question. I just think it's a really good idea that you have put that checklist when the student is creating the writing, simply because it's, when you're writing longhand with, on paper and pencil, especially for the upper level, like the junior high students, it's a, you get away from them writing online, or writing on a computer where they can move the cursor around, and you can't do that with a pencil. I appreciate that little prompt that will keep the students on task, so that they don't have to feel like, oh, no, I meant to put this paragraph on the, you know, second paragraph, whatever, change the paragraph. I like that idea. And the part that I'm really wowed by is this trend that you've introduced, that you are making the people, making the judgment and the decisions go through the process first. And I hope that that is a huge trend that will bleed into other educational ideas and educational decisions. And I, you know, following the trend, I have a question. You know, then, because of the fast pace of trends, what, like, how often will the tests be revised? Like, the tests, ideas be revised to fit the trends, the fast pace of the trends?
We, I'm not quite sure what trends you're talking about revising the assessment to use.
Right. But like, for example, you've introduced some really cool ideas, and these are more in tune with the trends that are going on right now, because there's the differentiated instruction. So now you've introduced differentiated ways of testing. So then, when the next trend occurs, or when we are, it filters in, are the tests going to change, or is it going to take another 10 years for the tests to catch up to the trend?
The idea is that, there is, there is a bit of a tension there. We like to have trends, we like to have trend data. We like to have scores that are comparable from year to year. And if you, the more new things you introduce into assessment, the less stable it is to have trend data. You may have to re-equate the test and start over again with a new data trend. But we tend to see what, when a subject matter, the trends in a subject matter have become large enough that the changes are important enough for us to introduce. We will introduce that into the assessment, and then we scale, start our statistical trends over again. But there is that tension. You do typically want a statistical trend that you can follow over time.
You better stop talking about testing. We're going to lose all the young people. We do other things, too.
Watch for it. It'll be coming soon. Carolyn, did you have a question?
Well, more or less a comment. First, thank you for this report. I can see it was a huge undertaking. And my comment is kind of a follow-up on what Kathleen said. I have an observation and a concern about all the texting that goes on with kids. And, you know, the shortcuts in spelling and everything else. I worry if that's going to spill over and spoil some of their writing correctly.
I'm not quite sure I understood.
Well, kids are short-cutting, and are you okay, is are you, you know, are they going to make the transition so they're doing well on these tests, the writing tests?
You've seen some of that.
Well, I think they need to learn when it's appropriate to use that and when it's not.
Well, I do, too.
So, you know, there's, in academic world, they need to learn how to write formal English. And, you know, the text messaging has its own place, and there's a, you know, a time and a place when they need to spell those words out. And so, you know, we can't ignore that.
Not either or, it's a both and.
Yeah. And I hope that they, that the spelling doesn't suffer.
And when we still get that, you know, well, they'll use the abbreviation and in place of that. We do look at these pieces as first draft pieces. You know, we've gotten some criticism from people in the field that are saying that, you know, you ought to replicate the real writing process and give the students the opportunity to do their first draft, and conference, and finalize their drafts. Well, we did try that at one time. It didn't work very well. And, you know, on a statewide assessment, this works, and our readers do know that these are first draft pieces. So if I'm reading and I see the abbreviation for "and," I don't hold that against them if most of the other spelling is correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Karen. Cassandra, please.
I was just curious, when you mentioned the-
Cassandra, can you, I'm sorry, can you speak up a little?
Sure. I have to direct this way. When you mentioned the Common Core standards, and you said economies of scale, which I think is probably one of the best things about the Common Core standards, are you finding that states have been pulling back on writing testing because of the high cost involved?
Yes. There have been several states that eliminated their writing tests over the last five years. So we, in some ways, did buck that trend. But again, we did have to go from sixth grades down to two so that we could afford it. We weren't going to get new appropriations to do this really great writing test in all six grades. It just wasn't going to happen. So, but yes, we have seen that that has happened. And I think that that's one of the exciting things about the consortium, is that in the 41 states that have adopted the Common Core so far, and are part of the consortia, they are going to have some pretty significant writing tests. And I think that's, you know, again, a lot of people say, what gets measured, gets taught. And I want to go back to, you know, thanking my staff, it's Steve to make sure that the psychometrics work, that we can do this reliably, Wendy to make sure that the content is good, that we've consulted folks in the university community. I think that we came up with a fantastic solution, and I can put it to my staff for doing that, so.
Kudos.
Thank you, Joseph. Dan, please.
I'm just curious about, so, back to the bias question, I'm curious about whether the, so one of the things that we think about in bias testing this stuff is whether this question is, for example, culturally biased or gender biased. I'm wondering if we've thought about whether the elevation of testing writing skills over the testing of verbal communication skills is gender biased. Specifically here, so think for a moment about cultural traditions that are very oral-centric, right? I mean, we think about indigenous populations.
Hmong.
Right. Hmong, et cetera. I just wonder about, I just, I guess I just highlight for, I lift that up for us to think about and acknowledge, right? And do that explicitly for the purpose of rushing us to a fuller student performance measurement system, one that includes a way to measure verbal communication as well as written, so on and so forth.
Thank you. Great observation. Kath, please.
I just wonder, in the, what you look at in bias, if geography is taken into account, urban versus rural.
I think you said that.
I think that's what Mary Ann was-
I know, that's what she was aiming at, but we didn't say it specifically, and I want to-
We actually don't have that covered specifically in terms of a subgroup, but the way that we handle that is via incorporating panelists from all over the state. So when we, when we draw the stakeholder groups together, we try to get voices from all over, all over the state, different regions, different population centers. So that way, they bring that voice to the table and discuss it. Because one of the things I had mentioned is sometimes the statistics that pop out don't have any merit behind them. Once you actually get some people looking at the items, looking at the language, people from different groups, they say, you know, I understand what you're telling us, that this one was more difficult for this group than this group, but we don't see why. And I think, and if I can kind of piggyback, I want to make a comment about the language bias and issues to think about. I think that that's something that is, definitely needs to be on our radar. And one place that we can take a look at that right now is in the testing of English language learners. Because a lot of those tests, including our ALPA assessment, require the speaking and the listening portion already. And we do have to be very culturally sensitive to how those results play out with different groups, especially in Michigan, where we find ourselves in a unique, and I think opportune position, to take a look at the Arabic population that other states don't have. And when you, when you look at that group and think about Chaldean, which is a spoken language, and, you know, doesn't necessarily have a literal written translation, we actually get to see some data that many other states don't have. And I think that when we bring that to the table with the consortium, it's going to come to light even more, and, you know, then that discussion can become much more global. I believe it was a very good point that you raised, and it's something that goes, kind of flies under the radar, because we tend to look at stuff that's on paper when we're doing assessments. But the speaking portion of it is, is something we definitely have to think about.
It would, it's true to me that until we can somehow raise copious amounts of money and time and staff and energy, which I'm sure is right around the corner.
Here it goes.
Sorry, tongue-in-cheek here. And again, I get back to teacher preparation. I know I'm a Johnny One note on that, but it, I think it really is indicative of everything that we do. It seems to me that those summative assessments that we are doing here are something that we need to focus on for sure. But the formative assessments that we do daily in the classroom, that's where, in the meantime, if we have proper training and proper recognition, proper awareness in our teaching staff, that's where a lot of this listening and speaking assessment can take place before the state gets that into their bailiwick. But you have to have the proper training in order to do that. So am I dreaming to think that that's something that could happen at a teacher prep institution that would allow us to take that into account as we look at writing, speaking, and listening?
Sally, your thoughts?
I think when you look at the professional teaching standards, if you go in there, there are, there are some of those in there. As we start to learn more about how this process follows through, we should probably take a look at that. I mean, I know Joseph has got a personal interest in making sure that every single teacher coming through the pre-service is trained in how to do formative assessments. I mean, it's probably two of the weakest areas, formative assessments in general, and then how to use the data to inform instruction. And I don't think we've completely closed the circle with the teacher prep institutions having a good handle on how to prepare teachers to do that.
No, I would agree with you on that.
Point well taken.
You know, I think the, to that point, the push from the board in the last few years and from staff with teacher prep institutions, I've come to believe that in the final analysis, what's finally going to be the issue to make our points more relevant with those institutions is when we have the student data tied to the teacher, tied to the teacher prep institution, and we're, and we're close. Because in fairness, they don't, I guess I've used this example before, but I have, I think we will- I think we will find an institution that maybe doesn't have the prestige of another institution, that actually is having better results in, let's say, science achievement gains, or writing. And once you can do that, it's a little bit like what we're seeing with the top-to-bottom list. When, when districts kind of see where they are, and, or schools rather, and then they find another school on that list that has similar demographics, that's way up the percentile list. It's very helpful, and I've had a lot of these discussions with principals, say, so I go to that school now, and our team isn't going to China, isn't going to some, we're trying to find out from a very similar situation, what they're doing that they're getting so much better results. That's going to be the breakthrough for teacher prep, and when, let's say, Central Michigan turns out to be a star in some area, and a Michigan State team goes there, and vice versa, Michigan State team hosts some others because they, but I think until it's more concrete, it's harder to get at this. It's very difficult to get at. And then I think the deans, one reason I think if we re-invite them back, or make a point to have them here, the thing that they, you know, they have staff that needs to be motivated on why they may need to change the way they teach teachers. And until you see more concrete evidence of what your teachers are doing in the field, it's hard for them, it's just the same thing we're experiencing in K-12 right now, I think will be the next step in higher ed.
And I think that's where I'm, why I am so focused on making certain that we link. Every time we have a presentation like this, every time we have Common Core standards, every time we have output, outcomes, outputs from the, from the classroom, it seems to me that need, that link needs to be not just somewhere buried in our mind, but needs to be upfront and personal, so that we keep that focus and that link from the teacher preparation institution, the continuum of a teacher's professional life, ever focused on us, on how that affects student learning.
You know, as you, I've said this before, but our daughter Krista, who's a relatively new teacher, and went to a very good institution, and would give credit for lots of her successes in the classroom, I've visited her classroom each year now, kind of, you know, for two reasons, but-
Yeah.
But I, you know, it's disappointing to hear that even her first year out, she learned things in a professional development atmosphere, either in ISD or in their district, that really she could have learned earlier in her five years. And, and we're still missing that connect, because I think it's a motivational issue. And until they're motivated because of metrics, and I'm, that sounds more, that sounds more, that's the word I'm looking for. It's just another way for them to understand where they really are, just, and I'm trying to draw the parallel. But I, but I, watching Krista and thinking, now, why wasn't that during the five years? Why did she have to wait till later to understand? It's not like it was all new. And, and then, one other thing, I think, kind of in the trending question that Matenga asked a little bit, I'll, true confessions on my part, I mean, as a Brooklyn kid who, who is now state superintendent, but I occasionally have these issues where I'm thinking, okay, now, is that the King's grammar, or is that my Brooklyneese there? I'm not quite sure for a minute. It's just, it's, I'll go to Marty, or Sally, or someone. And, but where I'm going with that is I'm learning a new skill. You know, lifelong learning, we talk about it, but I don't know if we internalize it enough. And a new skill for me, that isn't easy, by the way, or I'd be doing more of these, are the tweets. It's a different skill. I think it's helped me in other writing, because I'm forced to be more succinct. And I tend to be more verbal, it's a New York thing maybe, to some degree, plus the nature of my job for the last 20 years, I speak more than I write. So, it's been very helpful to me to kind of crystallize my thinking differently, and more often than not, I've got to go back and delete because I started to exceed the 100 and whatever the heck it is. And so, I think, how do we look at those as kids are, you know, that we welcome some of that, but, so that, as Sally said, it's both and, that there's the, the proper compositional, there's also an acknowledgement that kids are communicating in another way, and how do, I don't know how you do it. I mean, and I'm, you know, as much as I know from being here day to day, it's so impressive to hear, I think Wendy and Steve, and Joseph and Sally, because I think it gives, to me, it restores confidence, or not restores, it continues to build on confidence. I talked to the kids as they were leaving, and a couple of them said, we had no idea that much went into a Meep test. And I hope our audiences, wherever they may be right now, see the same thing, that this is really an important and well-thought-out process.
Yeah. I just want to follow up Nancy's emphasis on teacher prep with professional development for the current teachers.
Yes.
Because as you say, they didn't get it when they were going through teacher preparation. And it's important for them to know what, all of this, and how this is developed, and the ones that are participating know, but that's a small number. So, I think it's important that we somehow, or that get this out into the professional development field, and teach the teachers, the current teachers, what's going on.
Good point.
In the past, when we've had conferences around the state, we've often offered a range-finding session, and people that attended those, where we actually sat down with student papers, and we looked at how they were scored, and then we had the teachers in the session score the papers, they've often said it's the best PD they've ever had, and that it should be part of what's happening in, at the university level. So, I think that would probably be a really good way, at the universities, to have them train teachers in range-finding and, and scoring papers, using our rubrics that are out there right now.
Nancy.
One last question about writing. When I was growing up, writing meant taking a pencil and physically writing on a piece of paper. Writing now so often means getting your computer out and keyboarding, not writing, in my terminology. I know I'm old, and sometimes it's hard to make that change. My question to you is, I think I understood from Matenga's conversation with you, that this is done online, or is this done paper and pencil?
This is done paper and pencil. We, in 2014, are planning that the majority of students would be taking the test online. We would be offering a paper and pencil option until schools have an opportunity to make sure that their infrastructure is in place to go online, but we are making that transition at the same time that students are making the transition from generally writing on paper toward keyboarding. So, we are doing it, we're making that transition as well.
Much to my chagrin. I like the idea of keyboarding. I like the idea of being able to use that technology. What I am finding, however, is that kids are losing the ability to write. And I'm wondering, do you have any way, when you look at these, is there any kind of checklist that you're keeping at all, at those who print versus those who write cursive? Because it's been my observation that most kids can print, very few can write cursive, because most of them keyboard. And so, is there any kind of data that you have on that?
Do you have?
No, we do not keep data on that. We, when we score papers, we don't care if they use cursive or manuscript.
Right, this is just observational.
Observation, handwriting is very poor. I think you would, you'd be disappointed.
Kath, please.
We had a meeting in Monroe, eight, nine years ago, I don't remember, Mary Ann. And we, we met in Monroe, and there was, a man came from association named Penmanship, and pleaded with us to teach students how to write. This was eight or nine years ago, and I, I think you make a point, but I get notes from my grandchildren, they're printed.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are grown, grown grandchildren now.
I know.
And they print like, like they're fourth graders or something.
I won't be printing my notes to you guys anymore. I've heard this discussion. Well, thank you, guys. It's really well done.
This is actually fantastic. The rubric is phenomenal.
I think Liz has summarized it, it is fantastic, and thank you for that.
Thanks.
By the way, I overheard outside my office one day, and it took me a second to connect with what they were saying. Someone, I won't turn them in, said, well, you know, you're just going to have to learn flanbonics. I was suddenly thinking, flanbonics? I mean, my name's Flanny, I walked out, I said, what's flanbonics? And they all went like this, well, that's trying to understand you when you're jumping from left to right, and so, we all have our quirks here, I guess, and I'm trying to minimize them in public.
I think that's a humanism. How the hell? Happens. I think, wait a minute, wait a minute, we've got a term for that. That's, that's style.
Oh, that's style. Thank you. Thank you.